One nation, underground, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Moved by Commissioner Eichelkraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the council of the city of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, and the minutes of a special meeting held on Monday, April 24th, 2023. Both be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Would anyone like to approve before the council tonight?
My name is Robert Hasty. I just wanted to take a moment and officially thank Mayor Awesome for his years of service as commissioner and as mayor. And I would like to thank Commissioner Les for his service as a commissioner as well. Thank you guys both, and I look forward to working with you on community projects in the future. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, Rob. We move to, does anyone else want to speak? Okay, I'm going to try to set a record. We move to Commissioner Eichelkraut's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut at the bi-weekly salary payroll of April 28th, 2023, in the amount of $493,630.06 be approved and warrants issued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut at the bimonthly expense report dated May 2nd, 2023, showing expenses in the amount of $538,954.11 be approved and warrants issued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut at a resolution authorizing the execution of engagement letter between the city of Ottawa and Lauterback and Amon LLP for financial reporting for the police and fire pension funds, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut at a resolution authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement between the city of Ottawa and David Halliwell, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut at a resolution authorizing the execution of a vehicle purchase agreement between the city of Ottawa and Central State Bus Sales Incorporated for four new NCAT vans, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
I just said it's been a pleasure working with you and Commissioner Les, too. It's been great. I enjoyed your company and hope to see you back sometime.
We move to Commissioner Ganyar's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Ganyar at a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement and release with McKinley Investors for a LEAK adjustment, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Ganyar at the court received from Lane Christensen Company in the estimated amount of $215,737 to repair well number 10, be accepted, approved, and paid for from the water fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, any discussion?
If you remember, a few weeks ago, we put a quote on file for $175,000. This is not in addition to that, but since then, they've done their due diligence and their investigation. So their according, it's going to be 215 total, I think.
Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Les for working with him the past several years. I think it's been a joy. And I want to thank you for your leadership the last four years and working with you the past eight. It's been great, and I wish you all, wish you both well.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. We move to Commissioner Pearson's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Pearson at a resolution authorizing the execution of three service agreements between the city of Ottawa and Armac Uniform Services for rugs and mats at city buildings, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson at a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement between the city of Ottawa and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for an ASLIP grant for Allen Park, which has been on file for public inspections since April 18th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson at a reservation requesting permission from the Illinois Department of Transportation to temporarily close LaSalle Street from Lafayette Street to Lincoln Place from May 15 a.m. until 10:15 a.m. on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, for the annual Ottawa Family Pride Parade be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson that the city clerk be authorized to advertise for bids for the 2023, can we talk, 2023 Cooley Place project. Bids will be received until 10 o'clock a.m. on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Pearson?
Yeah, I want to thank you guys both for the last four years. It was, it was a pleasure working with both of you. And I want to thank you both for both stepping up and helping pull leads in parks and downtown. That's great.
Now, that was a guy that looked like me. It wasn't me.
I see it Saturday mornings about 3:30, 4 o'clock, I'll be out there.
All right, we move to Commissioner Les's agenda.
We have the report of the police chief for the month of April. Squad card calls, 1,692. Arrests, 326. Prisoners, 59. Sent to state institutions, 0. Sent to county jail, 1. Sent to juvenile probation, 11. Central dispatch handled 1,098 911 calls. They also handled 4,610 administrative calls. Move by Commissioner Les at the report of police chief, Brad A. Wilson, for the month of April, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
We have the report of the fire chief for the month of April. Number of bell alarms, 7. Number of still alarms, 17. Activated alarms, 36. Number of medicals, 265. Mutual aid, 2. Number of patients, 197. Total calls for April, 325. Structure loss was at $480,000. Contents lost, $190,000. Vehicle lost, $3,500, for a total loss for April of $673,500. Total on residence bill for medical services was 53. Move by Commissioner Les at the report of fire chief, Brian Bresner, for the month of April, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Les?
Yes. It truly has been an honor and a pleasure serving the residents of this community as commissioner for the last nine years. It's also been very rewarding working along with the talented staff employed at the city, our corporation council, our treasurer, Don Harris, who is not here this evening, and the other members of the council. I would like to thank Dan for the number of years of service and his dedication and the leadership that he has provided. He's done a great job, and he's been in here a number of years. So I do want to commend him on that. Thank you, Dan. And also, congratulations to Mayor-elect Rob Hasty and Commissioner-elect Brent Barron. You both are here this evening, correct? Moving forward, I challenge the incoming council to expert, exercise transparency. Seek community input on matters that affect all residents and keep a mindful eye on our checkbook, please. I wish you all great success in your respective departments and look forward to positive progress in the years that follow. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to the mayor's agenda.
We have the report of the registrar for the month of April. There were 39 birth certificates issued and 32 death certificates. Certified copies were issued with fees totaling $1,976. Move by Mayor Awesome at the report of registrar, Shelley L. Monks, for the month of April, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome at the report of the parking administration department showing fines collected of $195 for the month of April, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
We have the report of the building official for the month of April. There were 11 building permits issued with fees totaling $2,081. Total number of onsite building inspections, 63. There was one floodplain permit, which was no charge, two demolition permits for $50, two sign permits for $100, 12 fence permits for $550, two new business registrations for $200, 28 general contractor licenses issued for $2,800. There were 14 electrical permits for $950. Total number of onsite electrical inspections, 22. There were also 12 plumbing inspections performed. Our construction coordinator did a total of 126 inspections, and our code enforcement officer did 101 inspections, for a total of permits and licenses of 72, with fees collected of $6,856. Move by Mayor Awesome at the report of building official, Matthew W. Stafford, for the month of April, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome at the report of the sidewalk program showing two participants in the amount of $6,276.56 be approved and paid for from the general corporate fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome at a resolution authorizing the execution of an option to purchase agreement between the city of Ottawa and Koji Titanium LLC for property located in the Ottawa Industrial Park, which has been on file for public inspection since April 19th, 2023, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ganyar, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Tom, do you have anything, any comments, City Engineer?
Oh, no, thank you.
Chris, do you?
No, Mayor.
I'm sure Don would have said something if he was here.
Good joke.
A bad joke. Anyway, it's nice to see a good group, nice crowd at the city council meeting. It's very rare. I'm not known for long-winded speeches, and I'm not going to disappoint anyone tonight. I am very honored and humbled to have been allowed to lead the city of Ottawa these last four years. We are blessed with a wonderful city and compassionate citizens. I want to thank everyone who stepped up and ran for public office. It takes a lot of courage to put your name on the ballot, express your views, work the campaign, and ultimately see the results that may not have turned out the way you would have liked them. I've served as citizens for 16 years, and I've been surrounded by a great staff, city workers, and the city council. I know that Rob and Brent will bring fresh set of ideas to the council, but I'm confident that everyone will do what is best for Ottawa. It will be exciting times with the new municipal pool, YMCA, and waterfront development. I want to wish Mayor Hasty and the new council the best of luck running this amazing city. As for me, I'm looking forward to spending some more time with my family and enjoying retirement. I will be around for some community events. And I'm going to pass the gavel off to you, Mayor Hasty. I wish I had a magic wand for you, but the gavel's what I got. But thank you all, and God bless America. Okay, we are done with this council.
You have one more motion.
You need one more motion.
The rules, I know.
All right, we got one more.
All right. Move by Mayor Awesome at this regular meeting of the council of the city of Ottawa be adjourned, and this council's seen A.D.A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. It'll take a few minutes. Get the new council up here, and good to go. Now we're doing it.
You're always coming straight from where.
Thank you very much.